I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can we please start with a roll call?
Hey, Council President Corman.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Councilmember Benedetti. I can see her, I didn't hear you, but I can see you.
Oh, I'm sorry, here. I'll unmute myself this time.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember O'Halloran?
Here.
Councilmember McGurven?
Here.
And Councilmember Prince?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, first up, we have a proclamation.
Okay, proclamation, Women's History Month. Whereas Women's History Month offers an important opportunity for us to shine a light on the extraordinary legacy of trailblazing American women and girls who have built, shaped, and improved upon our nation. And whereas women and girls have made vital contributions, often in the face of discrimination and undue hardship, and have marched for and won the right to vote, campaigned against injustice, shattered countless barriers, and expanded the possibilities of American life. And whereas women receive the right to vote in Washington via constitutional amendment in 1910, and whereas Washington State has a long history of women elected to office at state and local levels, starting with the first women elected to the Washington State Legislature, Frances C. Axtell of Bellingham and Nina J. Crook of Tacoma in 1912. And whereas the city of Renton's first woman council member was Hattie Butler in 1918, and Margaret Proctor was the first African-American woman to serve on the Renton Council in 1978, and Barbara Shimpoe became Renton's first woman mayor in 1980, paving the way for other women to serve on Renton City Council, where they have shaped, influenced, and contributed to the history and growth of the Renton community. And whereas many women in the Renton community participate in their local government by serving on boards, commissions, and committees that assist in developing policies and making recommendations for the betterment of the Renton community. And whereas more than 100 years after the milestone passage of the 19th Amendment legally protecting women's right to vote, women continue to be trailblazers, pioneers, innovators, and leaders in their fields. Now therefore, I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim March 2021 to be Women's History Month in the City of Renton, and I encourage all members of the community to join me in the special observation and witness whereof. I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 15th day of March 2021. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Corman.
I move that the council concur in the proclamation.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Corman and seconded by Councilmember O'Halloran, I believe, that the proclamation, um, that the council concur with the proclamation. All in favor?
Van, but...
I'm sorry?
It was Councilmember Van that seconded.
Okay. So it was moved by Council President Corman, seconded by Councilmember Van, that the council concur with the proclamation as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, motion carries. And tonight with us to accept the proclamation is Renton's former mayor, Kathy Koker. Kathy?
Hi, thank you so much for inviting me to, to accept this proclamation. I don't know why the picture isn't showing up. Is it showing up for you?
No, ma'am.
It's not showing up on our side.
Okay, start the video, okay. Start the video. Still not showing up. Okay, I don't know what to do, so we'll just continue. I keep hitting start the video, but it's not working, so we'll just go ahead.
Okay.
Um, thank you very much. It was so nice to hear my mentor, Barbara Shimpoe's name, mentioned in the proclamation. She was an absolutely wonderful, wonderful woman. And, um, she was my mentor for a very, very long time. She's the one who got me into politics in the first place, so I guess I can say thank you and doggone it at the same time. I think we all should be very grateful to those women who were first, whether it was in political life or in anything else. Those women who were first were incredible. They had to break a lot of barriers, and we should acknowledge and appreciate their victories. And for all the women who are there now, all of you on the city council, all women in whatever walk of life they're in, um, what we must do now is continue that progress. Once we get a door open, we've got to hold it open for another woman coming up behind us. And I would encourage anyone who's listening tonight to take an opportunity to mentor a woman who's coming up behind you, who has promise and who wants to learn whatever it is that you do. I think that's one of the things that we need to focus on more and more. There are a lot of young women out there who need an opportunity to learn from those of you who are active today in whatever you're doing. And sometimes we get so busy in our lives that we forget that. Everybody's really, really busy. And right now with COVID, being still active in our communities everywhere, it's harder and harder to connect with young women in the community. So please take every opportunity to mentor and help other women and help them to grow, because once that door is open, we must make sure that we keep it open for other women so they can have the opportunities that we have all had. So thank you again for acknowledging Women's History Month, and I hope to see you all someday in person soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, we'll open up the remote audience comment period. It remains the strong intent of the city to have public comment regularly included on our agendas. Each speaker will be given five minutes to speak. You will be called upon by city staff member. The staff member will call the speaker's name and unmute the appropriate microphone, which will send an automatic prompt to the speaker of you have been unmuted. This is a speaker's queue, that it's their turn to speak. Please begin your comments by stating your name, city of residence, and the topic you are addressing. Speakers should be able to see a timer on the screen. Please finish up your comments when you see the time is close to expiring. Who do we have up first?
Mr. Mayor, we have two people signed up in advance to speak. When I call your name, I will unmute you. You will have five minutes to address council. The first person that we have is Kayla Kerr. Kayla, go ahead.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Kayla.
Um...
We can hear you.
Can anybody hear me?
We can, we can hear you.
Yes, we can.
Can anybody hear me? I cannot hear you.
We can hear you. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
Kayla, I'm going to move on to the next person and come back to you. The next person we have...
Alright, I'm getting text messages, you guys can hear me, I'm so sorry about that. Um, alright, well, I don't know why my video's not working, so I'm gonna hop into it while I still have time with you guys. My name is Kayla Kerr. I reside in Roy. I am with Puppy Land. We are a family-owned and operated puppy store that opened a month ago in your wonderful city. Thank you, guys, for taking the time to let me speak about who we are and what we do. My husband and I are very involved with our breeders. They're professional and licensed with clean inspection reports. We visit them frequently and look for things like exercise programs, socialization programs, veterinary programs, and retirement programs. We attend continuing education seminars with our breeders, and we're actually leaving for one on Thursday. We assist hands-on with a mobile vet doing OFA health testing, meaning my hands are on every parent dog. We very much want to show people that our breeders love their dogs and they only want to breed healthy puppies and that they are not, you know, considered puppy mills. Before we get our puppies in-house, they're all taken to one central location at this holding facility, you can call it a broker if you'd like. They are microchipped, they're checked by a vet, and their paperwork is entered into the computer so that we have a digital copy of their files in our system to give to our customers when they take their new puppy home. After that, they're transported to us. Our transport is specialized vans that have trained kennel techs as drivers, special ventilation systems, and secured kennels so the puppies are safe during transport. They drive 24/7, so the puppies don't have to be in transit very long. Now, I'd like to note that we get to see every aspect of this process. We personally visit our breeders, we personally visit our holding facility, and we can also inspect the transport system at any time that we want to. When our puppies do arrive to our store, they get checked by a local veterinarian. We hold them for a few days to monitor them before we send them home with their new family. We have a 15-day health guarantee, and we offer a 10-year health guarantee. That means if a customer goes home and their puppy passes or they get sick, they are covered. We're transparent with our customers when they purchase the puppy. They go home with the breeder information, parent health certificates, and a signed-off vet check form from our local veterinarian. We care about our customers, our employees, and our puppies very much. It's not about the bottom dollar, it's about providing a safe place for someone, specifically everybody in Renton, to purchase a healthy, happy puppy. Since opening our store in Renton, we've been welcomed with an overwhelming amount of support from the community. The community of Renton has made their opinion very clear, they're so glad that we are open. It's been our busiest location yet, and we've had many repeat customers purchasing their second or third puppy from us. We are excited to be a part of this community. We invite you to schedule a time to take a behind-the-scenes tour in our store with both my husband and myself, so that we can show you how we operate and our high standards. And I apologize, I still can't hear you guys.
The next person we have to speak is Dr. Linda Smith. Linda, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. To Honorable Mayor Pavoni, Chairperson Corman, and council members, over the, uh, over the course of the summer months in 2020, the Renton King County Alliance for Justice and Renton Resident for Change, along with other community advocates, raised our voice for issues of inequity in Renton, experienced by blacks, indigenous, and people of color. On Monday, August 3rd, 2020, the Renton City Council approved Resolution Number 4414, adopted the 2021-2026 Business Plan to strengthen its stand against racism and in support of racial equity. As residents of this community, we believe that for this to become a reality, we must move forward with appropriate action. During this time, we advanced four demands to the mayor and city council, which included creating the Equity Empowerment Commission, creating an anti-racist budget by directing revenues to social services and basic needs, meeting 50% employment and contracting for blacks and people of color, uh, rise the racial investment to secure equity, and creating a citizen oversight committee. Four of these items were discussed over a period of months at the city council meeting and community, and committee of the whole. At the, at the committee of the whole meeting on October 26, 2020, the following items were noted as follow-up issues for further discussion by the chairperson of the city council, the rise of the secure equity, Equity and Empowerment Commission, and to advance equity in purchasing and contracting. But it seems that these issues have gone unheard. They have fallen into a dark hole. We have had one meeting with the mayor, of which we are grateful, on the Equity and Empowerment Commission, and none of the other issues have, have even been mentioned since October 26, 2020. We as residents deserve and demand a response to issues we present. Equity cannot be achieved in a flat bottom. We will not go away. It requires transparency, and it requires the involvement of all voices of its residents, particularly those who have been left behind or impacted. Together, united for justice and change, we can transform Renton into an anti-racist city. Renton is not the city that it used to be, and there are many needs that needs to be met. To advance the resolution to action, we believe that change must be made. We believe that the following demands that we made earlier are, are demands that will really help to bring about change in our community, and when issues come up, we are able to address them as a whole community and not divide it, uh, one group against another group. So we believe these are matters of justice, and we're committed to pursuing these matters until justice is realized. We deserve to be responded to because we are resident. And as elected officials, uh, we elect you as, to look out for the people of the community, to hear our voices and to bring about change, and, and that is what we expect as residents. And so, uh, we believe that we deserve that as residents. We have faith in you because we voted for you, and so we are grateful tonight that as you go back and take a look and make these important conversations at each of your meetings. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Corman.
Uh, yeah, Dr. Smith is, is absolutely right that she and others deserve answers to these questions and deserve action. And, um, I would like to just let the community know that, um, at our upcoming council offsite, which will be this coming Saturday, we will be discussing these topics, um, and, and really hopefully bringing, bringing them forward, moving them forward. I know, Mr. Mayor, that you and your staff have, have already had an annual meeting to, to prepare materials and recommendations for us. But I, I want the public to know that we, that we are taking it seriously. I, I appreciate that Dr. Smith, uh, urgent reminder how important this topic is. And that, um, while we won't be able, we don't have any mechanism for, for taking public comment at the council offsite, I welcome it certainly, obviously, at this meeting and then at follow-up meeting, follow-up council meeting, so, um, and, and anyone's able to tune in for our council offsite. So thank you for that. Thank you. Do we have any other, uh...
Is there anyone else that would like to address council tonight? If you've called in and would like to speak, uh, please use your computer to raise your hand. Um, it looks like we have a few hands raised. Okay, man. Uh, the first we have is Madeline Magana. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Madeline Magana, and I have been one of the co, um, co-organizers for this weekend's rallies. And one of our requests is for council members to publicly condemn the terms Chinese virus, Wuhan virus, and Kung flu, and other racially charged terms that have casted blame and fuel on anti-Asian racism, hate, and violence. Both of my grandparents live in Renton, and I grew up in Renton. And I'm for their safety, and I want to know what our council members are doing to keep my family safe. Although I live in Maple Valley, Renton has been my community. I went to elementary school there, and I treasure this community as much as I do in my own home right now. I want to know that council members are actively talking about this issue and actively saying to protect our elders and acknowledging that hate is a virus. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, President, uh, Corman.
Yeah, I, I would like to say, and I, I know I'm speaking for the entirety of the council, but we do condemn those terms. We've, we've talked about, um, putting those terms, our condemnation of those terms into proclamations in the past, and we've chosen not to do it only because we didn't want to give more, um, airtime to such, you know, to derogatory terms. We didn't want them to be on the internet permanently in City of Renton language. Um, I don't know if that was a mistake, but I want the speaker to know that we do condemn those terms. And the reason that you're not seeing us just call them out is the more you repeat those, the more they spread, and that's the opposite of what we want to do. So, um, I'm, you know, certainly our approach, um, I'm always welcome to inputs on how we're approaching it, but I just want to say on behalf of the entire council, we condemn that language. Thank you.
Thank you. And we, uh, we did actually just release the, uh, the letter from you and I condemning, um, racism also in all forms. Uh, I think we have more speakers?
The next person is Joseph Todd. Joseph, go ahead.
Uh, good evening, council members. Mayor Pavoni, uh, Council President Randy Corman. I'm here to stand with Dr. Smith in, um, standing for the For For Justice initiatives that we've been asking council to address. I heard Randy Corman say tonight that you guys will be talking about those things at the council, the council offsite, and I welcome that discussion because we have been waiting too long to really dive deep into those specific initiatives and make them possible within the City of Renton. I also stand with the young lady that spoke before me, as the city of Renton should condemn hate speech, the specific hate speech that she's talking about, and you should do it in writing. Just because you don't write it and put it in a proclamation doesn't mean that nobody's not gonna say it and nobody's thinking about it. When you, when we condemn stuff in writing and we condemn stuff in council meetings just like this one, just like Randy just did, it lets people know that that kind of stuff will not be tolerated when they come to the community, period. And you can do it in writing. It's not, it, just because out there on the internet doesn't mean that somehow somebody's gonna pick up those words now because, um, God forbid that they won't know they exist. They'll say them because they think, because they think it's okay. And finally, we have got to make sure that as community members, that we address racism as a whole all the time. Our Asian community has been seeing violence, absurd violence, that we need to make sure that people understand that it won't be tolerated in this community, and we need to say it publicly. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, uh, Councilmember Perez.
I just want to clarify that the statements were in writing. They were published on the mayor's newsletter as well as Facebook and social media. It was a condemn of hate speech and specifically anti-racist, again, um, our Asian community on the website, and it was a letter from you and Councilman on behalf of the full council, but it wasn't writing.
Yes, thank you. And, uh, for the record, I'd also like to point out that, um, you know, that the things that were brought to the council in the past, the four initiatives, they, just because they're not, um, being discussed at every council meeting does not mean that we've stopped working on them. Quite the contrary, we have been working on them, and I believe we have a, a meeting in the next couple of weeks with Dr. Smith to actually discuss some of the work, and it will be discussed this Saturday at the council retreat, so...
The next person we have to speak is Nancy Quinn. Nancy, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you as always for your service to our community. It's much appreciated. I have two, I had a list of four items, but two of them have dropped off for now. One is the shelter that's along the Maple Valley Highway. It's directly across from the Stone Way property, and I'm not sure how to describe it. It's, it kind of looks like two old garages. Um, they're open on the top, but there's two, there's three cement walls, and we've got something, we've got a lot of tagging going on and some kind of a structure inside that looks like a pyre or a teepee, but it looks like it could be flammable. So I'm just hoping that somebody can address that, especially the tagging. It tends to be one of those things that, um, if it's not addressed, that it increases or that somebody else comes and puts their marks there. So I'm hoping that somebody can look into that. And also, I'm back on about the speed on the Maple Valley Highway. It's, especially now that we don't have a lot of evening and morning commuting traffic, people are driving even faster than they ever have. I've been in the community adjacent to it for 14 years this year, and, um, it's as bad, if not worse, than it ever was. And so I think we need somebody from the transportation committee or something to look at. And, you know, the, the abatement things that you guys have tried to do, thank you so much for the, the lights and the, the suggested speed limit lowering it to 35. It was briefly successful, and then, and then everybody got used to it, and it, it isn't successful anymore. So we still have a lot of accidents in there, several fatalities. So unfortunately, we need a, a more permanent solution. And again, thank you so much for what you all do. I can't, I can't imagine the hard work that goes into, to managing this entire city. Oh, and I do have one other thing. I don't think the last time I got to mention that, that your snow response, that I did get to go to, um, Bellevue and Burien, which were both a nightmare, and Renton was pristine. And I work at the top of the Fairwood Hill, and so getting up that hill, I was dreading it, I was literally, um, almost sick about having to go to work, and it was not anywhere near, it was, it was a delight, honestly. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. So I, I can address one of the issues that was brought up there, and that would be the, um, the tagging and graffiti. When COVID hit and we were kind of forced to really tighten our belt financially because we didn't know the impact, uh, to the city's finances, um, the, the graffiti abatement specialist, I guess for lack of a better term, was one of the, um, the casualties as our, as our focus turned inward. And I can say that, uh, we're in the process of bringing that person back, the same person that did a lot of that good work. So, um, that's something that we'll be, um, bringing to the council very shortly and hopefully bringing that person back to do that work, so...
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes, council member.
I just want to promote the benefit of the public. If you Google the, mm, there was also a press release from the, from the, mm, public release that, uh, President Corman and you published, and it's actually in the Renton reporter as well as in the news media as a, as a media release.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anybody else signed up for audience comment?
I see no one else, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay, so we are going to, um, we're actually gonna go backwards here because I jumped over administrative report, and we don't want to miss, uh, miss that, so let's do administrative report.
Mr. Seatbelt, wrong. Alright, the administrative report. Renton Municipal Arts Commission is accepting grant applications to fund 2021 arts and culture projects in Renton. Grants are available to individuals, organizations, and community groups. The commission is particularly interested in innovative projects that inspire creative participation, especially for our underserved community groups. You can find information on 2021 guidelines and the application form online at rentonlaw.gov forward slash R M A C. The commission will host a virtual instruction and Q and A session on Wednesday, April 7th at 7:00 P. M. Email arts@rentonlaw.gov to reserve your seat. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, road closures happening this week can be found at rentonlaw.gov forward slash traffic. All projects are weather permitting, and unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have the consent agenda. We have 10 items for council consideration.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President Corman.
This time, I'd like to ask if any council member would like any item removed from the consent agenda for special consideration. Hearing none, I move approval of the consent agenda as published. Second?
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Corman, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the consent agenda be approved as published. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Okay, motion carries. Next up is unfinished business. Council President Corman.
No one finished business, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Perez?
No one finished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van?
Uh, no one finished the business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Benedetti?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, the Utilities Committee has a report.
Okay. Utilities Committee Committee Report. Agreement with RH2 Engineering and
Agreement with RH2 Engineering Incorporated for services during construction of the Highlands Reservoir Phase 1. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement with RH2 Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $350,827 for professional services during construction of the Highlands Reservoir Phase 1 Offsite Improvements Project.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council concur with the Utilities Committee Committee Report. Second?
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Benedetti, seconded by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the council concur with the Utility Committee Committee Report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Okay, motion carries. Councilmember O'Halloran?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the Transportation Aviation Committee has one committee report to present.
Okay, Transportation Aviation Committee Committee Report regarding a professional service agreement with Partite Incorporated. The Transportation Aviation Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve professional services agreement number CAG 2432 with Partite Incorporated to provide construction management services for the Howser Way Intersection and Pedestrian Improvement Project, TIP 20-116, totaling $271,635.94.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember McGurven?
Yes, I'd like to move that the council concur with the Transportation Committee Committee Report.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Van, that the council concur with the Transportation Committee Committee Report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay.
Okay, motion carries. Councilmember Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have legislation, we have one resolution.
Okay, this resolution is a housekeeping item updating the resolution regarding electronic meetings and hearings. So a resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Resolution Number 4410, providing for meetings and public hearings of the city council, council committees, all city boards and commissions, and hearing examiner hearings to be held electronically due to the COVID-19 public health emergency.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember McGurven?
I'd like to move that the resolution be adopted as read. Second?
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember McGurven, seconded by Councilmember Corman, that the resolution be adopted as read. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay.
Okay, motion carries. All right, next up, we have new business. Council President Corman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Okay, so I'd like to again formally announce the council retreat from 9:00 AM until 4:00 PM on March 20, that's a Saturday. And then, on March 22nd, Monday, March 22nd, committed the whole meeting at 6:00 PM, and we have one, both of those meetings, I'm sorry, our video conference. The 6:00 PM meeting has one item on the agenda, and it's the Willowcrest Townhomes Project. And then, that same night, 7:00 PM, we have a council meeting. And, Mr. Mayor, I would also, at this time, like to move that we refer to the Planning and Development Committee consideration of a temporary grocery employee hazard pay ordinance.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Corman, seconded by Councilmember Prince, that we move to the Planning and Development Committee the possibility of a temporary grocery, do I read that again?
Employee hazard pay.
Employee, yeah, okay, temporary grocery hazard pay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, and that's all tonight, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Perez?
No new business, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Van?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benedetti?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, March 22nd, at 4:00 PM via video conference, the Finance Committee will be meeting. We have four items on the agenda: Waste Production and Recycling Grant with King County, King County Conservation Futures Grant that May Creek Greenway, utility billing leak adjustments, and vouchers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember McGurven?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have no new business to announce.
Councilmember Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, March 22nd, at 5:00 PM by video conference, the Planning and Development Committee will be meeting. We have four items on the agenda: House Bill 1406, ILA Companion Agreement Briefing, Document 15, Growth Targets, and Emerging Issues in CED. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. What is the wish of the council at this time?
Move we adjourn? Second?
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Corman, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone who wants to stay around, say no. Okay, good night, we are adjourned.
Good night, thanks.
Good night.